If you are joining us remotely, thank you for joining us as well. If you'd like to speak during an item on the agenda, you can raise your hand and I'll have the chair call on you, or you can indicate your interest in speaking in the Q and A box. We are using our new webinar feature. Other than that, we are not monitoring the Q and A box for content. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, agenda review. Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of our agenda tonight? Seeing as we have none, thank you. We'll move on to item four, which is comments and questions from the public not related to tonight's agenda. Are there any? Somebody's standing up. Come on down, please. And touch the little button at the bottom and it should turn up bright green.
Yep.
And remember to identify yourself.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Kelly Dockerty. I am a resident of South Burlington. I live on Laurel Hill Drive in the Semansky Park neighborhood. And I'm here to talk about the impact of the pickleball courts in our neighborhood. I wanted to share my experience, which is I have many times, usually in the morning when I'm out walking my dog, have had to ask people to leave the courts who are not obeying the open hours. Most recently, this happened a couple of weeks ago. I told two gentlemen to leave. They waited until I rounded the bend and was out of sight, and then they started playing again. And so I ordered them to leave. This is not an unusual occurrence, as you will hear from one of my other neighbors that's here. The other thing that I wanted to express dissatisfaction with is there is a gentleman in the neighborhood who has a small child, has been very concerned about the traffic on Andrews Avenue because his daughter is often out playing and riding her bike. He has a sign outside of his home. He put a sign at the park as well, and the Department of Public Works took it down. And this is his desperate attempt to try to get people to slow down when they're driving past his house. And so I just want to say that we in the neighborhood felt that that was very disrespectful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience here right now? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Allison Herrig. I am also in Laurel Hill, on Laurel Hill Drive in the Semansky Park neighborhood. And I want to explain my experiences with pickleball noise. I think one of the worst situations was at 6:47 in the morning, there were two people playing, and I asked them to leave, and they told me that they have no other time to play. And I had to stand there and wait for them to leave, which is pretty much also an occurrence that happens often, that I walk over. Usually it's in the evening, because I can hear it from my house, from my living room, from my bedroom, from my bed with the windows open. It's constant in the summer. So I wait until about 8:10 maybe. I give them a few minutes to finish up a game, and I'll walk over and say, hey, you know, the pickleball is now over. And they disrespect me, they yell at me, they say okay, and then I stand there and wait and tell them, I'm not going to leave until you move on, because I don't want to have to get up and walk back outside and tell them again. A few weeks ago, we also had an issue with someone driving very rapidly down Andrews. We were walking our dog, and there was no parking in the parking lot, because it really can't have more than four or five cars at any time. So we were walking in the middle of the road, because there was nowhere to go, and the gentleman was honking at us and telling us to move and get out of the way. And we were basically in the parking lot area, and I just turned around and said, I'm walking. You know, slow down, you're driving too fast. And, you know, we get flipped off, we get yelled at, screamed at, when we say anything to anyone coming to the pickleball courts. And it's really frustrating, and it's really disrespectful. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry for that. Anybody else? Come on down.
Hi, I come bearing gifts, which I will email you after tomorrow.
Sure, let's just have another and just pass them around. Is there copies for everybody?
No, there's not.
Oh, okay. We'll pass it around.
It's 39 pages. Giovanna Carino, South Burlington, Stonehenge. You know me well by now. I have just received from Kathleen Romito, M.D., this article where she interviewed 250-some-odd people. All about the noise, psychological effects, physiological effects, health risks, hearing loss, all over noise. She has compiled a beautiful report. And you will find all you need, and I'm not going to suffer through, not going to make you suffer through listening to everything. But the noise is disrupting residential areas in 350 parks in North America. Semansky Park is on that map. This is serious. We also have parking issues, not just noise issues. Kathleen just sued Boise, Idaho for 1.6 million and won. And the pickleball courts are being moved from her backyard. You will find links starting on page 23. Science-based information, health-based information, city advocacy, health policies. It's all here, and if you don't read it, then you will get sued. I had a lawyer call me, Charles Leahy, after Kathleen showed him a few of the news reports I've done. He said that I had a very liable case under ADA law, and he gave me the name of six local lawyers to talk to. This is a very serious situation. I go to Veterans Park all the time. Two basketball courts sitting vacant, grass growing through the tarmac, public parking, public bathrooms, water, the noise of Dorset Street blocking the noise from homes. It just needs to go.
Jerry Silverstein, you're online. Did you want to speak?
So I have two issues I wanted to comment on. I'm going to read from a prepared text that I wrote. They're both related in the southeast quadrant. I read an article that said the South Burlington Fire Department thinks it could pay for the estimated $2 million building expansion of Station Number One with user fees as opposed to property taxes. On the face of it, that sounds like a good plan. Nobody wants property taxes to go up more than they already are. However, let's ask what homesteads usually incur user fees. I don't have hard data, but it seems to me the likelihood is user fees will mostly impact older housing stock, because codes change over time. New houses are up to code, old houses often are not up to code. So who lives in the older housing stock? Again, I have no hard data, but logic tells me that many older individuals live in older housing stock. These are individuals who are often living on fixed incomes. So remember, 17% of South Burlington residents are older than 65, and Vermont is one of nine states that taxes social security income. Seniors, by definition, have limited time left on Planet Earth, and their life savings and income should not be viewed as the personal ATM of the community nor the state they live in. So please be careful in authorizing user fees to pay for city services. Similarly, I make a request when the city council approves an ordinance. It gives residents a period of time to adapt to the ordinance before the ordinance goes into effect. And I'm specifically thinking of an issue you're going to talk about in the next meeting, the electrical permit for various activities in single-family homes. I have to bring it up tonight, because if I wait until November 2nd, you may approve the ordinance, and then I'm in a situation which I don't want to be in. My house was built in 1985, so I'm exempt from hardwiring of both CO and smoke detectors. But new codes require that when my house is sold, my units must wirelessly communicate. The cost for me now to upgrade from perfectly good CO and smoke detectors right now to wirelessly communicating units is $700 just for the electrician to come and install the new units. If you pass the ordinance in November 2nd, I will have to add to that $700 bill another $200, because there's $100 for the permit. And then the electrician told me, after the installation of the new units goes, he has to come to the house when the inspector comes out. He has to be there, and he will charge me at least another $100 for him being there when the inspector comes out. So it comes to be $900 for the upgrade to wirelessly communicating units, and I have to throw away perfectly good units which are working. I tested them all this weekend, you know, I pushed the buttons, it said beep, 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 confirmed me that they were all working. The combined hardwired CO smoke detector I have in the hallway upstairs where the bedrooms are is about 10 feet from my bedroom, so I'm confident if something goes wrong, it'll alert me to that fact. All of this is meant to, oh, and also, all of these costs are on top of the fact that I just paid my $2,600 second installment on my property tax bill. Remember that as a percent of income, Vermont has the highest property taxes of all 50 states, and that's driven by the fact that we have the second-highest spending per pupil of all 50 states. So to the city council, I ask you, please stop and think before you act. Actions have consequences, and in the cases I've detailed above, consequences physically impact senior citizens who, like myself, have limited time on this wonderful celestial body called Planet Earth. I do not desire to be your or the state's personal ATM. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else online? Nobody has their hand up. Anybody else in the audience want to make a comment tonight? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to item five, which is councilors' announcements and reports on committee assignments and the city manager's report. Elizabeth, would you like to go first?
I've had a busy couple of weeks since we last met. I think the first item was the, I attended the Planning Commission meeting and had an opportunity to see an early draft of the master plan for open space and parks presented by CRO, the consultant. Attended the Economic Development Meeting, and I got some insights as to the recommendations on the working groups that the committee is recommending. The SB 3C meeting, and I think we're seeing a proposed budget from them this evening. The School Board meeting, and one of the items there, if, I'm sure Jesse is aware of it, but there is an intent to look for a permanent superintendent decision by early 2026, January if possible. And then there was very positive feedback, I thought the city would appreciate, on the Dorset crosswalks, a lot of positive feedback from staff who kind of transition, and students who transition across Dorset pretty frequently. Let's see, I think we have had a housing committee meeting since we last met, and I think those were the primary things I've been involved in.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Andrew?
Sure. So I attended a sextons meeting where we discussed the encampment at Shelburne Cemetery. We also had an extensive history lesson on the name of the cemetery and trying to figure out whether it's properly spelled with an I or an E. Certainly very enlightening, we have very good historians as part of the sextons committee, and we discussed some other things, needs for records and storage. I attended the Economic Development Committee meeting. The focus was on figuring out the priority areas that the committee wants to focus on, forming working groups to help push those priorities forward, and having those working groups kind of figure out what could be done, say, outside the rubic of the city and city staff. What could folks individually or with other resources make happen? What kind of really needs to be part of the city to push forward? Went to Bike-Ped Committee meeting, and we reviewed the circulation study for Rick Marcot, which I'm hoping will have on an agenda here at some point, so we can also discuss and comment on it.
That's up to you guys. I don't think there's any necessarily policy action for you all to take, but let's talk about that maybe another.
Yeah, we can talk about that. Sure. We attended a conversation with the councillor, right? Where one resident had a very good request and suggestion. He said he finds needles on the floor and doesn't really know what to do with them. Doesn't know whether he should handle himself, call the police. If he handles it himself, what should he do with needles? How should he handle them? How should he dispose of them? Where should he put them? And requested that we come up with an FAQ for residents that gives them...
Where was he? Where?
Where did he find the needles? Oh, boy, I don't, do you recall where?
Yes, it was at his residence, which is a townhome or condo association.
But the request was for an FAQ, which sounded to me like a really good idea, so folks would know what they should, what they should do. I attended the, oh, and at that same conversation with councillor, Jerry made some remarks similar to what he made tonight, and those are things we hope we'll discuss next week when we have the second reading of the electrical ordinance. I attended the Renewable Energy Vermont Conference. Lots of discussion about the change in federal policy and how that impacts Vermont and impacts our goals for renewable energy. Not great solutions, but people will push forward and muddle through. And then finally attended the Vermont League of Cities and Towns event, where lots of good discussion, but one particular thing I do want to highlight, which is, the keynote speaker handed out something called the Dignity Index. And this was such a wonderful framework, I thought, for being able to deal with conflict in a dignified way. I'm just going to read a few things here, because it's on these two pages, and it'd be wonderful to figure out how we could circulate this more broadly, because I thought it was really good and really effective. But they have steps to follow when stress arises. How do you solve problems? By choosing dignity over contempt and be curious, listen, you know, listen, not respond right away. Challenge ideas, don't attack the person. Acknowledge when someone makes a good point. Build up rather than tear down. And then they score how well you did on one through eight, the worst kind of, you know, someone who just says, they're not even human, it's our duty to destroy them. And the very top, someone whose speech reflects that each one of us is born with inherent worth, so we treat everyone with dignity no matter what. And then it goes one through eight. Anyways, I thought this was really good, and we had really good exercises and really a model, I think, for people to follow when conflicts arise, which they do, and how to address those conflicts.
Thank you, Andrew. Anne?
By the time I learned this, sorry. I too attended the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and found the keynote speaker and the subsequent workshop really very helpful in how to deal with conflict, how to talk and how to listen when people have different opinions and that kind of thing. I also depended, attended a community listening session from the Vermont Department of Health that was focused on substance use and in particular opioids. I want to say, most of the community were the community of providers, but our city manager was there, and the police chief of Burlington, and I, at various times, tried to bring the conversation back to the community, the community or more basic, I mean, in terms of people who were perhaps not ready for going into treatment. But it was a listening session, and it was very helpful. Then the third sort of activity that I participated in in my role as a city councillor was I attended the South Burlington Communit... South Burlington 3Cs.
SB 3C.
SB 3Cs, but we are going to have a presentation later on, so I'm not going to go on with that, but it's a wonderful organization. We have just hired a dynamo who, you know, has done more in the month that she's been on board than we've been able to do as a motley group of volunteers for a while. So I look forward to her presentation.
Thank you, Anne. Lori?
I'll try not to be too repetitive, but I too went to the community listening session for the Substance Abuse Services Discussion. Found it very informative and thought it was great to have all the stakeholders in the room talking to each other and really, not just listening, but sharing information about how the services can overlap with each other and do a better job of taking care of this population in need. I also went to the VLCT Town Fair, and want to make a comment about the keynote speech as well. I was incredibly impressed and grateful that Vermont League of Cities and Towns chose as their keynote address the topic of civility and how we communicate with each other in public, and how we can, in these times of pretty strong division and diverse perspectives, be able to really listen to each other, speak to each other with dignity, and find where we have commonality. If we don't build trust and commonality with each other, we don't hear each other. And that's happening more and more all over our country. And I just have a tremendous amount of appreciation that our body, which is bringing together all our cities and towns, chose to have this be the primary focus for the meeting this year. And South Burlington was also incredibly fortunate to host the city operators from all over the state this year. So that was wonderful. I also did the sextons, and there's lots to talk about. They want to request signage for the cemeteries to talk about what the regulations are around how it's used, and homeless encampments and things like that. They are getting their annual report ready to present to the city council. They're going to be planting lilacs at the Shelburne Road Cemetery. And they're talking about and wanting to understand how to organize and where to house all the data that they have for the sextons, and that segues into the rules and regs that have been presented to the city staff, and hopefully finding a home for a cemetery administrator so that there can be a place for all of this information to actually find a home. And lastly, I just came from a Parks and Rec meeting where they talked about SB 3C and the hiring of Sophia Babbitt as the next, or the new executive director, and gave an update on the Hubbard Bike Path project and where that is. And it may have some work start this fall, but it's primarily going to be a next spring Update on the Feral Dog Park upgrades, which have started and should be finished by November. And Goose Pond's upgrade in connection to the City Hall, or City Center Park is underway. Discussions about a farmer's market next year, and where that might be, and what its purpose is, and how that's coming together. And lastly, there was a presentation, which we're going to be following up on tonight, about e-bikes versus e-motocycles and the impacts that they're having on our roadways and our shared use paths. So it's been a busy couple of weeks. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lori. So after the last city council meeting, one of the meetings I went to was a special presentation by the Lund Home of a video that a few of the residents had made. It was called Recovery Moms, Recovering Out Loud. And it was an idea formed by those moms. One of the Lund Home programs is having moms that are recovering from various substance abuse live in the facility with their kids so that they can have a stable place to live and receive treatment. And it was quite a moving video. You get to see another side of the issues and, you know, the Lund Home that's trying to help with that process. And that was an interesting juxtaposition to the Monday meeting we had before, where we had a lot of feedback about the needle stick at Marcot School. So after that, there was enough sunlight, I went out and I walked the perimeter of the Marcot School yard, just to see for myself, you know, what the condition was of the brush and the fences and everything, and be able to compare that, but there were the reports that we'll hear later on another time. But it just, it made me think about recovery moms, and then there are Marcot moms, and I just, that whole juxtaposition was in my mind for a while. I know there will be a lot of discussion about that later on. I also went to the Town Fair, and the Dignity Index presentation by the keynote speaker was really interesting. One thing I like about Town Fair is at the breakfast, you sit at random tables, just sit with random people, and you go, where are you from? They go, well, we're the staff from Weathersfield, you know, we're the city, you know, the select board, or, you know, the Lister, or whatever. And I go, I'm like, where's Weathersfield? Please help me out, because I don't know the whole 252 locations. And you get into little conversations with them, and you ask them, well, so what's the problem in your town? You know, what's the issue du jour? And they'll tell you, you go, wow, that's kind of similar to the problem we have right now as well. And that, so it was a really, a good conference to go to. One of the nice things is in the downstairs, the Doubletree, they have all the vendors that provide services or sell services to all the municipalities and towns. And I just happened to cruise by the Vermont Bond Bank, and I'm always curious about the bond bank, and so I started talking to them about it. And, you know, they sell their bonds twice a year, usually in March and August. And I'm like going, remind me again about Vermonters and whether they have a leg up on, you know, the industrial investors on being able to buy Vermont bonds, you know? And they're like, oh, absolutely. If you go to their website and you sign up with their email, you'll get a notification in advance that they're getting ready to do a sale. And then you have to get in line, either through some brokerage that supports it, but if you're a Vermonter and you want to invest in a Vermont municipal bond offering, you have these two offers twice a year. I'm pretty sure that they're state and federal tax-free. And Vermonters get first choice in line to buy these bonds. I just wanted to reiterate. I also went to the Chittenden Area Transportation Management Association, or the CATMA Conference at UVM at the Davis Center, and their keynote speaker was Myrna Valerio, and she's the woman who has, like, taken on every possible sport. She's a heavy woman, and she's a black woman. She's skied, she's mountain biked, she's done marathons, she's run all over the world. And so it was a motivational speak, plus, at the same time, she was showing a lot of instances with video of mass transit that she used to get to some of these places in Europe. I mean, you know, going up hiking in the Alps, and the train, electric trains took her, like, all the way to the base of the mountain, you know, or halfway up the mountain. And so she just kept showing train after train after train after train in Europe. You're like going, yeah, I wish we could have something like that, too. I also went to the Planning Commission meeting where the Parks and Open Space Master Plan consultants presented a draft action plan, which was pretty well-received. There was feedback from the commission, which was good, and I'm sure we'll see another draft of that later on. I also wanted to give a shout out to Public Works for the very nice repairs that they did on Spear Street in the last week and a half. Those have filled in, filled in a lot of potholes, and I hope they survive the winter season, but we did need that. So that's all I have. Jesse?
Great, thanks. So actually, only a couple of updates. We have been very busy orienting our new library director and police chief, preparing FY27 budget, and the auditors were here last week, so a lot of administrative things. Just notes to the community, we have an FY27 budget survey that's out on the, in the world. If you go to the last City Bulletin, you can see the link to that or the budget page on the city website. That is open through October 30th. And then our Safe Roots to Schools survey, which is currently focusing on the roots to the middle school and high school campus, is open until October 31st, so encourage you to participate. And then two really fun things coming up. The Haunted Hustle and Glow Walk is scheduled for this coming Saturday, the 25th? That's right, October 25th, my goodness, at Red Rocks. It's going to be great. Really encourage folks to come out to that. And then next Tuesday, the 28th, here in the auditorium, one of my favorite shows, Away with Words, co-hosts are going to be here to talk about the language of resilience, words in a warming world, to talk about words and phrases connected to climate change. So if folks are interested in that, it's a Vermont Humanities Program hosted by us here in the library. Encourage you to sign up. Thanks.
Thank you, Jesse. We'll go on to item six now, which is the consent agenda. We have, I think it's just three items? Yeah, three items. Six A, which is the considering sign the dispersments. Six B, approve the loan agreement RFI 353-3.0 to the Vermont State Revolving Fund in the amount of $2,409,200 for the Airport Parkway Solids Handling Project. Six C, approve a one-year agreement with the Howard Center to provide the community outreach team. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Altos in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Aye. Thank you. It's unanimous. Moving on to item seven, which is approved resolution number two zero two five dash two two, honoring Donna Kinville for her service on the Sextons Committee. Good evening. Would you like to come up and sit in the, the royal chair?
You have quite a few sextons here.
Would you like to come up and read it? Come on down.
I thought you were going to read it, John.
Come on down. Yeah. There's room for one more. So good evening, folks. We have this agenda item to honor you for your hard work. We have the resolution. I think we would want to read it.
John, are you willing to read it tonight?
I can read it.
That would be fabulous.
Is the microphone on?
Okay, this is a city council resolution honoring Donna Kinville's service on the Sextons dated October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas for over twenty years, Donna Kinville as city clerk ensured continued access to our two city cemeteries by managing plot sales, burial requests, record keeping and responding to records inquiries from the public. Whereas in the fall of twenty eighteen, recognizing the declining condition of the cemeteries at her and city councillor Thomas Chittenden's urging, the city council appointed three sextons. Whereas as a Sexton Committee member, Donna began the process of assessing the cemeteries and defining the committee's immediate and long-term goals for improvement within them. Whereas under Donna's leadership and together with the Vermont Old Cemetery Association, several very successful cemetery community volunteer restoration days have been held. And she has led the planning for a fourth upcoming event. These events which we held, these events have resulted in significant visible improvements. In addition, cemetery maps have been advanced. Ground surveys were performed to identify open ground for future burials. A cemetery record management software was procured and a draft document of cemetery rules and regulations has been developed. Whereas Donna has also recently led the committee in the process of identifying and planning beautification projects at the Eldred Cemetery made possible by a sizable private donation. And whereas the city now has a committee of eight committed sextons who have all benefited from Donna's leadership, support and readily shared knowledge. Her dedication and commitment to the cemeteries is reflected in the significant progress made towards the established established improvement goals and the preservation and renewal of these vital historical properties. Now be it resolved that the South Burlington City Council, on behalf of the city's residents, recognizes Donna Kinville's achievements and her contributions to the condition of the city's cemeteries and her service to residents who wish to use them. And be it further resolved that the South Burlington City Council expresses appreciation and gratitude for those contributions and wishes her well in all the years to come. Approve this twentieth day of October twenty twenty-five.
Excellent.
Thank you so much, John, and thanks, Donna. You know, cemeteries are really, they really are important to a community because they're, they're, they're literal repositories, not only of the remains of people who have passed away, but they're also repositories of names of people, right? And whether they're cremated or they're buried, it doesn't matter. Just the retention of a name in a place, in a piece of stone is, I think it's, it's very significant in, in the town's history because it's going to be there for a very long time. And as you walk through all the cemeteries in, in Chittenden County and elsewhere, right? You, you obviously start to get a, a sense of history, just of not who these people were, but also groups of, of children's, you know, tombstones, which was a whooping cough, you know, epidemic or this epidemic, whichever it is, right? And you, you understand hardships that people went through. And, and that's, but that's part of what it was like to be a Vermonter, you know, a hundred, two hundred years ago in that process. So I, I think it's, it's important work and I think that we need to have our cemeteries upgraded. I think we need some columbaria in, in one of them at least, and, and then start having burials commence again. So thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution honoring Donna Kinville's service on the Sextons.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So approved unanimously. Any comments?
I just want to thank councillors Chalmick and Smith for volunteering to be on the Sextons Committee. It's a nice breath of fresh air to finally feel like we're making some progress. Although I'm no longer a Sexton for the city, I'm still going to be around. So you'll still see me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And will be a print suitable for framing made available? Okay, great. And we'll all have to sign that later tonight. Don't forget. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, which is receive an update from Champlain School Apartments Partnership on the former Holiday Insight and approve the related amendment number one to the September sixth, twenty twenty-three development assessment. Jesse Baker, city manager, Paul Connor and Planning and Zoning Director.
Great, thanks. So while Paul and Joe come down, I want to do a bit of table setting here. So welcoming Joe Larkin of Champlain School Apartments Partnership. And specifically for those who are not well-versed in the details of our development documents, the former Holiday Insight. So Joe is here to share his kind of vision and plans for partnership with the city as the city meets its climate and housing goals. But for her a little history of what's being asked of you all tonight. In twenty twenty-three, the council and the city entered into a development agreement with the Champlain School Apartment Partnership to enable them to receive a certificate of occupancy for the building that was under construction and take down the old Holiday Insight as the motel program was ending. And really take the time to think about how to maximize the development potential of that site. As you can imagine, in the last couple of years, a number of things have changed in our world. And as we think about, think about tariffs and the capital markets not end, you know, upzoning and thinking about change, policy changes you've made since the last development agreement was in place. Paul and myself and the city attorneys came to negotiate an agreement with them to bring to you for your consideration, extending that development agreement to enable Joe to really do his due diligence and make sure that we are maximizing the potential of that site. So that's the background. That's what gets being, being asked of you tonight. But we thought it was a great opportunity for Joe to come in and talk to us about his vision for city center and South Burlington largely. Hi, Joe.
Well, good life. Hello. Thanks for having me here tonight. You know, it's, thank you for having me because I, it was an honor to sort of get an opportunity to get in front of the council. And, you know, as I thought about that project, the first thing that struck out was like twenty, two thousand twenty-three and how quickly time's going by and how challenging some of these projects have become. But also I think how rewarding it is to see some of these projects come to fruition, whether it's city center or I'm quite proud of what we've pulled off on North Dorset Street. And it really is directly related to the, first the form-based code came in. And that was something that was just talked about at first and then implemented and then we responded to and worked through. And, and then, you know, it seems to continue to improve. And so, you know, as we sit here and think about the potential of that site, I think it's meaningfully greater than it was, you know, even in two thousand twenty-three, the, the most recent changes will allow, we think, for even more dynamic, more dense, more interesting development on that corner. So thank you for the opportunity to, to pursue that and also thank this council and thank the planning and zoning for being forward-thinking and forward-looking and I think quite ambitious with the, with what they have undertaken. So. Maybe a couple of other thoughts about the, that building. And I don't know if everybody knows the history, but we tried in good faith to keep the old Holiday Inn and ran into a number of challenges on that building and it came down. And I, I, we had designed so much of the project around keeping the vestiges of the Holiday Inn that my mindset was stuck on that. And I think collectively, our team's mindset was everything about designing around the Holiday Inn. And now that it's gone, it really is a clean slate to refocus. And it's taken, it takes a better part of a year or two to kind of clear your mind of these old ideas, but I think the new ideas are better. And I think, you know, while we remember that Holiday Inn, I think we're, we're all sort of thankful that it did in fact go away. And there's an opportunity for, for new construction and, and I think meaningful construction on that site. I remember when we were negotiating the, the development agreement. We wanted to make sure that we were putting in some, some reasonable boundaries and, and making sure that we're going to move this thing forward. I remember things, I'm a developer. You don't, you don't need to encourage me to develop on this site. That is something that we're gonna do. And, you know, and here we are, you know, a lot of time has passed, right? I think that it's still a site we're excited about and I think one that's important to the city. So. Any, any other specifics I want to touch on there?
I think just make note for some of our councillors also that in addition to this really important site, the, you've been partnering with us on some other really important sites around the city. Larkin Terrace and your vision over there, transformation over where Puchanelles is, that, that several of the places that we've been eyeing for the coming years, that you've got, that you've got plans in the works there and have been executing buildings like Larkin Terrace the last few years. So just to orient the council to those ones too.
Sure. Yeah. And, and maybe our family business has been in real estate development, specifically in South Burlington for, for quite some time. I'd say my dad's first project was the original Larkin Terrace in nineteen seventy-eight. And I have the opportunity and honor to sort of follow through with that. But with that comes, we have some legacy assets that have been around a long time. And when I pull up and, when I pull up in the old plans, you know, just watching sort of the development around them or the potential of the sites and watching the zoning change over time, really does unlock the potential of these sites that are, that I perceive to be infill sites now. And so reimagining old parking lots into neighborhoods, setting, you know, and, and sometimes our, we try to plan big and then move incrementally so that we don't get too far ahead of the capital that is available in Burlington and South Burlington area. But really sort of getting, I think eleven eighty-five Larkin Terrace is an example of a, a, a meaningful development that we got, we've, we've accomplished one of many hopeful phases there. But it takes time and it, and the city's been great letting us and working with us as we sort of reimagine these nineteen ninety PUDs. And, and so I think that there's tremendous potential in the most recent changes that are, that are really having, and we're trying to respond to pretty quickly because we think that what was a parking lot can now be buildings. And, you know, what were sort of standalone buildings can be neighborhoods. And I think that's, I think that's the vision, what the city's encouraging, and I think we're trying to respond to it directly.
Can you remind me, the council in the past had to vote on a small LDR change or an agreement about the, the road that goes into the site, right? Because of how the building faced it and, and that was like three years ago. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, this is over at the former Holiday Insight. So the shape of the property is such that there's a, per our planned official map, that the road goes up from Dorset Street and then takes a sharp right towards the Windjammer. And we, with Joe's help, identified not just that property, but three or four properties around city center where when you've got a sharp turn, that leaves a pocket in the back, which when a building needs to face on a road can potentially create the sort of gap of, of an area where is, it's ripe for infill development. But there wasn't a way to meet it under the form-based code. And it's not in our collective interest to just see that be a parking lot. And so that was identifying a, a shortcoming of the form-based code to allow for infill on a site like that.
In the current building, what's, who's in there now?
Great. Yeah. So UVM rented it for two years and this June, it's going to return to, to its, you know, market rate use.
So they're in the second year now?
They're in the second year.
Okay. It seems like there's never any cars in the parking.
I get that feedback quite a bit.
Is it because the students don't have cars or?
Well, that's part of it. And there is underground parking. There's eighty-three.
Oh, there is?
Parking spots in the building.
Didn't know that. Did you know there was underground parking in that building? No idea.
And we did that to sort of allow for, you know, that building certainly didn't need eighty-three parking spots in it. And imagining a future phase, having that parking in phase one was, I think, you know, sort of laying the groundwork. But encouraging me to do phase two, I think is the, the idea.
And then the plan is for a second building, right? To the, to the west of the parking lot?
It is. And maybe, and we're still wrestling and sort of working through the, the opportunity now that is the, the recent change. And I think it, I, I'm imagining either two buildings or, or one larger building connected, you know, in, in interesting ways. But I, I, we're still working through what that might look like. And I, I think that we haven't put it down. We just haven't figured it out.
So this agreement extends the current agreement through twenty twenty-nine? And, and can you just like briefly tell us again what it does exactly?
So in the original development agreement, there was a provision that certain permitting steps had to be taken. And if they weren't taken until, if they weren't taken by a time certain, there was kind of a, a fee allocated that was meant to re, re. Well, it was meant to kind of cover the lost potential property taxes that, from the Holiday Inn going down. So it, so this amendment delays that for three years. Also, we should note in transparency, which we have to Joe, that there is another clause that was in the original agreement about the ability for the developer to come in and demonstrate under a future zoning code that it met the current, that current zoning code and extinguish the development agreement altogether. So that is still an option for the developer if they choose. That would come with a cost to kind of re-permit an existing building. And part of, as we were discussing this and negotiating this, the question became, would we rather the developer re-permit an existing, put money into re-permitting an existing building rather than put that money into envisioning what a future could be according to the vision that the city and the developer had originally set? So that's, so the extension is not changing that provision, allowing that provision to stay in, but expanding, but delaying the fee until two thousand twenty-nine.
Right, right. Councillor questions?
So is the float of extension perhaps to take advantage of the new codes, which allow more building height?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yes. Time is time, just partly because time got away from me as a developer. I just, with that project had a number of challenges and it took some time. But also really the, the more exciting thing is contemplating the, the opportunity that is height and, you know, some of the form itself. So.
Okay. So you need a, we need a motion to approve this agreement? Is that true?
Yes, motion to approve the amendment and authorize me to sign it.
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much for coming.
Can I add one more piece of commentary now that you've considered the vote? So I think, I think Joe and his team present a really interesting example to Vermonters of the developers that we have in our communities, you know, and correct me if I say something wrong here. You know, Joe's not a New York City developer who's coming into South Burlington and throwing up high rises. He lives in this community. He was born in this region. His father was a first generation developer. He's carrying on that family business. These are the types of developers across Vermont that we need working to help meet our housing needs. Joe has a certain scale here in South Burlington, but these types of developers take, are scattered throughout Vermont at a very different scale. And I think as a state, we're, and using CHIP and using other resources, we really need to figure out how we find those people in our communities who want to do good things for our communities, who are of our communities and have them help us solve problems. So thank you for being that developer here in South Burlington and hopefully there are a couple more of you.
Absolutely.
Out there.
One, one small question?
Yes.
Whatever happened to the application for the, the apartment building with the very small apartments behind the Zen Gardens in the parking lot? Was that, was that your application?
That was my application. I think that's part of what we call the eleven eighty-five master plan. Some version of that still exists. I think it got, that was one of the projects that got a little washed out by the COVID uncertainty. We were, we were permitting right into that.
Yeah.
That window. I think it's still an interesting and exciting project, the one that doesn't pencil at the moment. I think you probably hear that of a number of projects, but one that we still have on the books and.
I, I'm happy to see retail is filled in at the, the Blissby Building on the corner of Fayette and Hundred and Seven, right?
Yes.
So that's, that's great. That's taken some time, but you know, it looks like those are good, you know, businesses to have in there. And I'm sure that Blissby is, is doing well because they, I go there too much.
I'm there quite a bit too. Also, we've repurposed the Palace, the movie theater into, there's a, a training hockey rink in there, a skating rink. And a number, two other fitness facilities that are going to. facilities that are going to go could go in. So we think that's kind of an interesting
Right.
hub of excitement, so.
Yeah, cool. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Joe. All right, moving on to, uh, item nine, which is receive a presentation from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee on the use of e-bikes on the city's shared use paths. I think we have Bob Britt here tonight. Are you by yourself tonight?
Timor is online, Jesse, I don't, and he can potentially share
Okay.
the slides.
Who is?
Timor?
I don't see anybody with that name as.
We have an Emily.
Do you know who, which one of these that is?
I do not. Keep going down. Is there one more? Well.
Emily, do, were you trying to make a comment about the past agenda item?
Um, hi, yes, this is Timor. I'm sorry, I'm logging into my Zoom.
Great, that is you. Hold on a sec. Let me move you over to a panelist. Hold on.
Thanks so much.
Before we begin, every city councillor that uses an e-bike, raise your hand. Okay, thank you.
Uh-oh.
Okay, I think I'm here. Thank you.
Ah, good. And the slides?
Yep, and that should be coming through shortly.
Fantastic.
All right. So my name's Bob Britt. I'm from the Bike and Ped Committee. Timor, if you want to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Timor Sutsukam on the Bike Ped Committee with Bob. Thank you.
Uh, we first, we'd like to, we appreciate the fact that, uh, the have the opportunity to present to the council our com- the committee's, uh, shared use path and sidewalk recommendations this evening, specifically those having to do with e-bikes. We thought we'd start with a brief overview of the background information that was provided in the to the, uh, council and the public in the agenda packet, uh, and then move right on to recommendations. The committee started hearing public complaints in twenty twenty-four primarily about the excessive speed and lack of audible warnings when bicyclists and e-bike riders passed pedestrians and other users of the shared use paths and sidewalks. The committee began looking into these issues last spring by first gathering information about state laws and local ordinances surrounding e-bikes. State law defines an e-bike as a bicycle if it has a full, has fully operable pedals, a saddle or seat, an electric motor of seven hundred and fifty watts or less, and it's a class one, two, or three as defined in the state law with a maximum assisted speed of twenty-eight miles per hour. The picture you see, um, on this slide, uh, is an example of a e-motorcycle masquerading as a bicycle. You see the pedal, um, but it, it also has six times the wattage that is allowed under state law, uh, to be defi- to be called a e-bicycle. And it can go up to speeds of forty-five miles per hour. Um, we also found that there are e-mopeds for sale at at retailers like Walmart that are also masquerading as e-bikes. They have pedals, they're advertised as e-bikes, but they do not fit the definition. They have two times the wattage of allowable e-bikes, so fifteen hundred watts, and they can go thirty-two miles an hour, uh, under their propulsion. State law allows municipalities to regulate e-bikes using its shared use, the e-bike use of its shared bike, uh, shared use paths and sidewalks. South Burlington does not have any specific e-bike ordinances and therefore e-bikes meeting the state's definition are bicycles, not motor vehicles, and fall under the city's bicycle ordinances. The city has, also has no restriction against bicycles using sidewalks. The committee reviewed the e-bike recommendations of several national and regional bicycle advocacy organizations, and they do not want to inhibit e-bike adoption and are not recommending any e-bike regulations beyond those that apply to traditional bicycles due to e-bikes' health and climate benefits. Burlington is considering a speed ordinance, but it appears to be a low priority at this time. And the Burlington Walk Bike Council, which is similar, not exactly to our Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, is not advocating for a speed limit at this time. They, they, that is not on their agenda. Some municipalities across the country have set speed limits, but with limited enforcement available, they appear to be doing so to establish a clear safety benchmark, formalize community expectations, and provide a basis for occasional enforcement or warnings. Before we move on, are there any questions about the background information that we provided? All right, turn it over to Timor for the next slide.
Thank you, Bob. Can you see the next slide?
Yes.
Thanks. Yeah, the Bike Pet Committee had several discussions on this, uh, with last year, and we came up with three categories of actions that we think could start to address some of these concerns. When coming up with these recommendations, we wanted to make sure that we don't discourage use of e-bikes or single out micro mobility devices. We also struggled with the idea of limited enforcement of any potential rules, so we leaned on software approaches as reflected here. Broadly, we've have three categories of recommendations: education and signage on our paths, improved definition in the city ordinances of allowable devices on shared use paths, and lastly, speed advisories. As I mentioned, we don't want to discourage use and adoption of e-bikes, but we do want to make clear what is an e-bike and what is not. Um, so what you saw in the previous picture was not an e-bike. What you see here is a legal e-bike that follows all the limits that Bob just mentioned. Um, and finally, we also want to recognize that shared use paths are actually for shared use and all who use them need to be considered of other users. So for the first category, education and signage, we think that this is key to this issue. We really need to encourage courtesy and good path etiquette for everyone to be able to enjoy these shared resources. We recommend a brief code of conduct for our paths and including it on signage throughout the system. Education through media is important, but working through schools is equally important, especially since many concerns we get are often about what appears to be middle and high school kids speeding on paths on essentially illegal electric mopeds. Um, the sign you see on the screen is from Burlington's path. We would like to see something similar here in South Burlington. Things like slow down when others are present, pass on the left, and so on. And then finally, if we do adopt any kind of speed advisories, which we'll talk about in a second, they need to be prominently displayed on our paths, especially in the most crowded and popular sections. Over to you, Bob.
Yep. So definition of micro, micro mobility devices. Uh, the committee recommends that the city update its ordinances to say that electric bicycles are bicycles as defined by state law. Otherwise, the city's bicycle ordinances are generally in great shape and just need some terminology updating and expansion to include some other acceptable e-e-microability devices. Using the state law would require e-bikes to be either class one, two, or three and be equipped with a fully, with fully operable pedals, a saddle or seat for the rider, and an electric motor equal to or less than the seven hundred and fifty watts. Adding the state e-bike definition would also reinforce that a person under sixteen is prohibited from operating a class three bike. E-bike. The committee also recommends that electric scooters, e-skateboards, and other electric mobility devices with a propulsion system less than seven hundred and fifty watts, seven hundred and fifty watts or less, are allowed to use the city's shared use paths and sidewalks. However, any electric device such as an electric motorcycle or moped that has a propulsion system greater than the seven hundred and fifty watts are not e-bikes under state law and should be excluded from using the city's shared use paths and sidewalks. We also recommend that any micro mobility device with an internal combustion engine should not be allowed on the city's shared use paths and sidewalks. Next slide, Timor.
So that would include bicycles that have been retrofitted with a little gasoline motor, right?
You have?
Yeah. What's an internal combustion?
Well, run by gasoline.
Oh, okay.
Okay. At least that's my definition, not being an engineer.
Yeah. Bob, do you include, um, or did the discussion include, um, scooters that have wattage over that? Seven fifty as well?
They would be excluded. Yes, you're right. So, yeah, I didn't expand on that, but they would be excluded.
Um, and what do you mean by operable pedals? Um, I believe, um, class three, you can, you don't need to pedal.
Actually, it's class two that you don't need to pedal to get the assist. Um, it does have a throttle. It only, it caps out at twenty miles per hour speed. And again, we're really falling back on this education and courtesy, um, dynamic that we think is
But we're, um, you're not proposing that we exclude those.
We're not. Um, we, we talked to, um, some of the merchants like, uh, Earl Cyclery, and they only sell one, two, and three. They do not sell any bicycle above a class three. And so I don't think we'll be impacting our bike shops, but, um, and there may be impacts on Walmart and others.
Because all three, one, two, and three can have pedals.
They can all have pedals. Yes. I mean, a lot of class two have pedals, but you don't necessarily need to pedal with a class two bike. If you want the health benefits, you certainly would.
If it doesn't have pedals, it's not class two.
Correct.
If you have a seven hundred and fifty watt machine that doesn't have pedals, it is not class two.
Correct.
It's probably going to be more than seven fifty.
Yes. And that's what we're seeing. Other questions on that section? Timor, over to you.
One question that I'll throw out now. I think the the discussion is really important to have about how e-bikes and bikes in general are behaving on our shared use paths. I think it's also important for us to think about, um, how our pedestrians are behaving on our paths. I ride my bike. I ring my bell whenever I'm coming up to a pedestrian. At least fifty percent of pedestrians have earphones in, don't hear anything. As I am on a shared use path and I am responsible to take care around pedestrians, I would not be walking on a road with earphones in, paying no attention to the traffic. And I think that there could be an education piece for pedestrians as well, indicating that if you want to be in your own world, do it on a path that is a, is not a shared use path. Because there's specifically a transportation corridor and it's as dangerous for them to not know what's going on as it is for an e-biker or another biker to be zooming. So I'd love to see that incorporated into the education piece.
Good point.
Just hold on a second till we're done with the councillor questions and then we'll have it come up. Keep, you got more, right?
Yes. Timor?
Last slide. Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Bob. Um, yeah, this is our last slide. This is probably the most controversial and sticky part of this. Um, as a Bike Pet Committee, we went back and forth for months on whether to recommend a speed ordinance. In the end, we agreed to recommend this action to the council because we think it'll provide a net benefit. Earlier versions of this called for speed limits, but we have softened this to a speed advisory considering that we can't really enforce the speed limit in our desire to push forward education and courtesy rather than strict regulation. So we recommend that the council consider speed advisories of fifteen miles per hour for our widest paths of eight to twelve feet and ten miles per hour for sidewalks and legacy paths that are, um, eight feet and under. We also recommend that the council have an option to lower speed advisories in dense areas such as city center. We settled on these numbers based on the experience of other municipalities passing similar ordinances and based on our shared experience as a Bike Pet Committee on on these paths. You know, most of us would not feel comfortable going faster than ten miles per hour on most of our sidewalks and so on. Of course, we don't want these to be speed targets. So going back to education and signage, we need to continue to state to that people need to reduce speed as is safe under the circumstances. For example, when it rains or snows or when you're passing someone. And finally, we think these advisories will be particularly important for e-bikes and even electric mopeds that don't meet e-bike definitions. All those devices have a display that shows them their current speed. So having a visual clue that their speed exceeds established advisory limit for a path will hopefully encourage users to slow down. That's it. Thank you. This concludes our presentation.
Questions? Go ahead.
Um, did you consider in your advisory, uh, suggesting that people wear helmets?
I mean, you're crazy if you don't, but no, we did not specifically call that out. But it, you know, it could be added if the council so thinks, so.
As a recommendation.
As a recommendation, in that code of, code of conduct, perhaps.
Yeah, yeah. Um, what caught my eye was the, uh, riders less than sixteen years of age cannot, uh, drive, uh, a class three e-bike or class three plus, right? If it's class three, it doesn't have pedals, right?
Right.
Yeah. So that's really important because we have a rash of under sixteen-year-olds riding class, what I would call quote-unquote class four bikes all over the city. And they're, they run around in packs. They have a blast, right? They're going thirty, forty miles an hour on paths and on roads. And they have helmets on most of the time, which is great.
Yeah.
But, um, if that's the state law, then somebody needs to tell them that they can't do that anymore.
Right. And, yeah, we haven't figured out, is that the police or what? But, um, yeah, it's, it's, um, I believe it's state law, and I'm not a lawyer, but uh, looking it up, and it was not as easy as it was thought. The, um, if it's, if a vehicle is over a thousand watts, if a motorcycle or moped is over a thousand watts, um, it, it needs a license, registration and insurance, I believe.
You believe? Yeah, we.
I looked it up today just to look again, but it, and that seems to be the state law that it becomes, uh, a motorcycle.
So I I follow a lot of people on Twitter in Boston, right? And once in a while they'll say, hey, the police came through and collected like thirty, you know, uh, small motorcycles that were unregistered, that were illegal, and they just chucked them in the back of a truck and then pounded them all and drove them away because they were driving everybody in the neighborhood's crazy. Because they just, they drive, they don't follow any rules, right?
Exactly.
And, uh, and it's, it's a safety issue. Uh, it's a quality of life issue because some of them don't have proper mufflers or whatever, so. You know, the, it, when we have certainty about those state rules, it might be interesting to have a conversation with the police department about what, what can be done, right? And what, what education, but this is part of what you're presenting to us as well because this education is going to have this other information that's going to trickle down, hopefully through the school system to the parents. They're going to go, oh, I shouldn't have bought that e-motorcycle for my kid after all.
Right, or it can be used somewhere in a dirt lot, somewhere.
But if it needs a license plate on the back and a registration?
If it's on a road.
If it's, if it's on a road, right. But if we say they can't be on the path, they gotta be on the road, then.
Right.
Right. So.
Exactly.
I had a local parent speak to me yesterday about the e-motorcycle in specific in her neighborhood. And she has a couple of neighbors' children that have these things and have been using them totally inappropriately on the neighborhood street. and have been using them totally inappropriately on the neighborhood streets. And she approached one of the parents about it. This is a fifteen year old kid, and the parent's response was, I can't do anything about it. He bought it with his own money. So there's clearly some education that needs to be done around this. I do have a comment about the speed advisories. We've developed an active transportation plan. The city of South Burlington has intentionally decided to do shared use paths as opposed to bike paths and pedestrian paths. So the expectation, my expectation is that our shared use paths are a transportation corridor. And bicyclists very often go over fifteen miles an hour. And if I'm commuting to come to a council meeting or something else, my intention is to be getting there. I think that when you talk about the code of conduct, not exceeding ten miles an hour when a pedestrian is there or you don't have a sight line, makes a lot of sense. But if I'm on a clear path with clear sight lines, going twenty miles an hour is not, it's not fast on a bicycle. So I don't know how to parse that. But we want to encourage people to use these things to actually get where they're going. And if you say you can only go ten or fifteen miles an hour, you're discouraging that use. So, and yes, you can go on the road, but there's a whole different level of comfort and safety for riders on the road versus riders on the shared use paths. So I, I don't know how to parse that one, but I think it's important also.
Well, and that's why we decided to go with speed advisory so that we could avoid that because we agree. I mean, go twenty miles an hour when it's clear and there's no other users in view. So it's
I think you guys have done a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you guys have also done a great job. Thank you for putting all this up. The signage obviously makes all the sense in the world. Well, is that something that Bike Ped will take forward to make a recommendation of what a sign might say?
Yes. I mean, that's what we'd like to work with staff and come up with the actual signage, the education package, the different promotion ways of going through front porch forum and other to get the word out, articles in the other paper to get that word out of everything. So we think that that's important.
Great to see the sign. I'd love to see what that, what that'll say. Because I think once you have that, then the edu, you know, maybe things follow, right?
So we just wanted to make sure we had your approval to go forward with that type of, of action. And secondarily, to go to this, work potentially with the city attorney. I know it's not on your priority strategic plan, but to, oh, go ahead.
Yeah. So what, sign, I'm, I'm all in favor. I think we should do that. I think you were going to this, the attorney. I, I totally agree with you too. When, when I read our regs, they're, you kind of really can't make sense when the skateboards aren't allowed, any motorized vehicles aren't allowed. Does that include class one, two, three e-bikes? I think our attorney does need to look at those regs and conform them to your suggestions, which to me make a lot of sense. So that, that seems pretty clear.
We just wanted your authorization to go forward and do that staff. I know Jesse.
Have a clear line between what should be on the paths and what shouldn't be on the paths.
No horses still.
In terms of the speed limits, is that something that we should be discussing here, future gen data? Because I do have some thoughts on that. Maybe I'll just articulate some. I mean, picking what Laurie said, you know, twenty miles an hour is not really that fast for a bike and so I, I, you know, I think even telling folks that, you know, they should consider staying on the fifteen doesn't feel right to me, honestly, when we're saying twenty is okay. Like, it just doesn't feel right for me to have a fifteen mile an hour advisory. Personally, I would have a speed limit. We have speed limits on our roads and we know that maybe they're not as limits aren't enforced as, as we all might wish them to be. But I think a law nonetheless is effective. It gives parents in particular the ability to say to their child, you can't go faster than twenty. It's the law. And I think that can be really effective whether or not it's enforced. So personally, that's how I would go. I wouldn't at this point complicate it by having separate speed limits for other types of paths. I just not aware we've had issues yet on sidewalks. I don't know how someone would know whether a path is eight feet or six feet or ten feet as you're riding along. I kind of like to wait to see if we adopt a speed limit, how that works out. Just legislate, I think, when, when necessary, I suppose. The one other thing I, I maybe think about putting in our rules is like an explicit law that you have to slow down when you're passing. Not just courtesy, not, not just a sign. I've seen other jurisdictions be really explicit that you can't go more than five miles per hour faster than, you know, the person you're passing. If they're walking, running, biking, so you know, you have to kind of adjust your relative speed to their speed. That may be a little too precise, but telling someone you have to slow down appropriately when passing and having to know, well, you have to slow down. So if you're going twenty, but there's a pedestrian up ahead, you gotta slow down to five or six. That, that kind of makes a lot of sense to me as a really important incremental safety measure. So that, that's how I would go.
Well, but when you say that, I mean, I think the Burlington Colchester path, and there's at one point on the path that it says, single file. And then there's another sign that will say, there's a there, there's a sort of a, a narrow turn. I mean, you know, I mean, so they're, and they say, slow down or something. And so, I mean, I don't know how many signs we want or don't want. And I'll throw in about speed limits. If we put it at twenty, people will go twenty-five. I mean, you know, I mean, so, so I, I'm of mixed thinking about if we're going to put a suggested speed limit. But that's all right. I also wonder, which is maybe not part of your you were, kept referring to state law and that these vehicles that, that the kids are riding appear to be perhaps not legal for them to be driving, riding on streets and things like that. Is that something perhaps we could talk to our delegation about in terms of bringing it to the Department of Motor Vehicles or something? And perhaps they could do some statewide, because I too have heard from someone, but actually the person I heard from said, you know, said, I'm seeing it elsewhere, not just in, in South Burlington. Perhaps we don't have to carry this alone. Perhaps the State Department of Motor Vehicles could do some education.
Elizabeth?
Yeah, I have to say, I saw three of these e-motorbikes on Market Street with three young men driving. They were headed toward Rick Markop, but they looked a little bigger than elementary school kids. So, but it, it is, it was on the sidewalks here. So it was, it was alarming to see, really right, right across from the Allard Square Building. I, I think, you know, to Andrew's observation, that happens when you're on a bike and a car passes you. There's some phenomena of speeding up to pass. And that's always driven me crazy as a cyclist when a car speeds up to go past me. Is it just, is that much more startling? But I, I think the speed limit concept in more congested areas may be a way to start with that because that's the behavior you want to drive and keep those areas safer. But I, I agree with the committee's recommendations. I did want to clarify one thing. If you, you indicated that sixteen year olds should not be riding class three bikes, e-bikes?
Yes.
Due to state?
Under sixteen.
Understate. So if a business sells, can a business sell a class three bike to a sixteen year old?
I don't know.
On Amazon, they can.
I, I do not know the answer to that, whether they are allowed to sell it. They, they cannot operate it once they, if they buy it.
Right.
And they can be a passenger on a class three, but they cannot be the
Yeah, I was not aware of that restriction before. And that, because, because the limits on that, or it doesn't have the throttle as the class two and the max speed would be twenty-eight.
Right.
And that's with assistance, unless you're downhill or something. But
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that seems I wasn't aware of that restriction, but it, there, if, if bikes are being sold, which I'm sure they are, because sixteen year olds are, can be big people. Anyway, that was a little bit of a revelation to me.
I like your recommendations. Too much signage. I'm, I'm concerned about that. Like, you know, every, start of every path, there's a big sign, you know, but, but having this, a speed advisory sign at key points, you know, in our system to remind people and also like Andrew said, you've got to slow down when you approach people going slower than you, right? And I've seen those Burlington signs down on the waterfront, you know, they're, they're cute. And I like the, the cute aspect, but I want to make sure that the signal is precise for somebody, you know, like a rear view, slow down if you're, if somebody's walking on the side of the, of the path. I, you know, fifteen is, whatever, whatever the number is, right? If it's a safe speed and you're telling people that this is the safe speed to go, then that's an advisory for a safe speed. So I don't, I don't mind that.
We wrestled with it quite some time.
A, a quick addition, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate for the Bike Ped Committee or for the council or for staff or who. But the issue of these motorcycles or e-scooters or whatever they are that aren't allowed on the pads, that are in the hands of our youth right now. How do we bring this to the attention of law enforcement and figure out how we're preemptively dealing with it? Much in the way of the issue at Rick Markot. We don't want this to become a problem that gets we need to get ahead of it rather than having it get ahead of us. And do we bring this to the attention of, of the police chief or is it already in their attention? How do we circle around so that everybody's starting to focus on this and we can address it?
Sure.
So this is a very standard. You have a policy committee that's making a recommendation to the council. Do you want us to work on this outside of our other structured work? So the council first has to say, yes, staff, go spend some time on this. Staff, I mean, Erica has from the staff in the Bike Ped Committee, of course, but legal has not reviewed this, public safety has not reviewed this, communications has not reviewed this. So I think the pending action is do you want us to bump this up and bump other things down? And what, what do you want us to bump?
Want to bump anything down? I want you to just add it.
What would you bump down, Jesse?
I have no idea. I don't have an answer to that right now.
But, but we just have some simple questions, right? We want to know if that age limit, what it applies to.
So I think it might be worth you having, hearing from the public and then I'll try and recap what I think you're asking us to do.
Sure, sure. All right. Who would like to make a comment from the, like Barb Service is up first? And I just identified you. Did I identify, identify you correctly?
Barbara Service, resident in South Burlington. First, thank you. I am so grateful for this discussion and for all the hard work that you've done. As one who came to you a while ago and said, I've almost been run over a few times. I really appreciate the comments about pedestrians. And I think that was, that was well put and we need to educate the people who walk. I am always stunned when I see people with two earbuds walking or running and they don't I'm still trying, just got new hearing aids and that's where my book comes. And I'm not sure how I'm going to do this yet, but I promise I'll figure it out, Laurie. But I think the piece about, about public education for pedestrians and runners is, is really important. I would suggest that you add to your list of congested areas, yes, city center. Having almost been run over a couple of times on Williston Road and Dorset Street and Shelburne Road, I think we need to acknowledge those as, as places where there are going to be e-bikes on the sidewalk. But we need to remind that that would be an, an area where ten miles an hour makes me really nervous as a pedestrian. Just to comment on that. And I'm hoping there's a way to engage the schools and, and the PTO. And this is my idealism of, of, I'm looking at Elizabeth as I say this, but of course, the PTO is going to be in, but that, I, I feel for those parents who say the kid raised the money themselves to go out and buy this thing that's going to run me over on the sidewalk. But this might be a way that we could have some, some good collaboration. And little things like adding, teaching kids and adults to say, on your left, or ring their bell. It stuns me that people don't know that and don't think about it. I know those are all really minor comments, but I had to stay up and stand up and say, thank you. And add a couple of things to the discussion. So thank you again for all of your work on this. As a, as a pedestrian, I am grateful. And hopefully an e-bike rider eventually, as soon as my knee says it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Who else? Well, I think gentleman in the back had his hand up earlier, please, in the green jacket.
Tim, how are you?
Fine. Ken, how are you?
Good.
Please identify yourself.
I think we're very lucky to have a committee that
Can, can you make sure you speak in the microphone?
We're very fortunate to have a committee that's studying the problems that are occurring, challenges, I should say.
I think the green light's not on. Push the little button.
Yeah, get a little closer to it. The green light's on, so. So we are lucky to have a committee studying some of the issues.
This is Ken Boyd.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, Ken Boyd, yep. And that's not important, but that's who I am. But I, I do see some things that need to be looked at closer by the committee. Because the number of e-bikes is only going to increase geometrically. They have just become a way of life. I was in Europe for three months in two thousand nineteen. We've not seen the tip of the iceberg when it comes to e-bikes. And they are going to need some serious regulation as we look, look forward. E-bikes on sidewalks, I would never support that. Absolutely not. I don't think they belong there. I'm not even sure bicycles belong on there. Last thing I would want to be hit by a bike moving fifteen miles an hour or twenty-five miles an hour, having been in a number of bike crashes over the years, racing and whatnot. Fifteen miles an hour, you get hit by a bike with a two hundred pound person on it, you are going to regret it. And they will too for some, to some degree. But the main reason I came up tonight, in South Burlington, we have a sign that I think makes perfect sense. It's on the little section of bike path just to that goes between Farrell Street and UDM boundaries on Dorset, or Spear, excuse me. And it basically points out that pedestrians should be on the left, facing traffic, walking towards traffic. Bikes stay on the right.
This is on the bike paths or on the main road?
On the bike path. I mean, I've got, I've got some extra copies here. I'll pass them where you can take a look at them.
And where is the sign located?
Where is the sign located?
It's on that stretch of, the bike path that goes from Farrell Street over to Spear Street. It's been there for years. And it clearly points out that pedestrians should be on the left, facing the oncoming bikes. And that bikes should be on the left, traveling, or excuse me, on the right. So they, you're not coming up behind someone and counting on everybody to yell, on your left. Some people do it. I'd say the greater majority do not. Or they're not heard because as someone mentioned, they got their earbuds in. And, and likewise, cyclists, you see them riding with, with earbuds in as well. So we're not, we're not paying attention in general. And if you're moving at fifteen miles an hour, twenty miles an hour, twenty-five miles an hour on a, on an eight foot or ten foot path, that doesn't give you a lot of room for, for error. So having the, just like we learned as kids in school, if you're walking on the highway, you walk facing the traffic because you can see what's coming at you. They can see you. If you're walking on the same side as the moving traffic, hey, guess what? Unless you've got eyes in the back of your head or you've got a mirror on your hat, you can't see what's coming up behind you. And you're relying on people to say, on your left. And usually you don't hear that until they're right on top of you. I saw an interesting incident on the Burlington bike path just a couple of years ago, lady walking her dog, another issue, but she was on the bike path, walking on the right hand side. Guy was coming up behind her, pretty good rate of speed, probably fifteen, twenty miles an hour. I don't know if he yelled, on your left or not. I think he did. But the lady's dog was not on a short leash. And he heard something and he ran out. And he heard something and he ran out. The guy, fortunately, didn't run over the dog, it was a small dog, his pedal caught the leash. Yanked it out of the lady's hand, she nearly fell down, the dog being dragged down the the bike path. And all of a sudden, everybody's yelling at each other because they were both to some degree at fault. The fellow on the bike should have slowed down when he approached these people, did not. So we have, you know, so much common sense involved in riding on these bike paths and. I spend a lot of time on them, both as a walker, as a runner, as a biker, I try to stay off the bike paths unless I'm with my grandkids. Just ride out on the road and. But we really need to, we really need to look at, and I really think we need to look at that idea of getting the pedestrians moved. Onto the correct side of the street. I talked to Locomotion about it one day, I could not get a straight answer why the bike paths in Chitina County are set up that way. Doesn't even make sense, I don't know where the idea came from, begin with. And if you look at, I think if you look at the. Description of traffic on bike path, it says stay on the right. And they're referring, it's because they refer to it as a bike path, they do not refer to it as a shared space path. So, yeah, bikes stay on the right, pedestrians stay on the left, you always see what's coming at you. I think it, I really think it it bears some looking at, and I assume that the committee has probably had some of that discussion already. But that one sign is in South Burlington, we only need a couple hundred more to. To get them out and get them up. I'm not a big sign guy, but that sort of thing. I wouldn't want to be up here all night. I actually walk always on the left side of the bike path. I've had people tell me, hey, you're on the right, wrong side of the path, and I'll usually say respectfully, you know. You can walk on whatever side you want, I choose to walk on this side because I feel much safer, I can see what's coming at me and. I don't have to suddenly react to somebody who at the last minute yells on your left. So something to look at, to consider, uh, I think we could be a lot safer. The other thing I hope the committee has looked at. I didn't hear it in the discussion tonight, needs to be regulation on lights. Front and rear, in Europe, in red Germany, if you're not riding with with a light and you're caught out on the road, there's a significant fine that goes with it. And we need to do that here because right on Dorset Street, I drive that road quite often, right around dusk. There's a lot of people out there riding without reflective gear, without lights on the back. And that is dangerous. Nobody in a car wants to hit somebody and then get into the whole legal mess and. The the conscience of having hit somebody, we need to really, we need to put that law in place, I'm surprised the state doesn't have a law.
There is law.
Yeah. Laws are great, but we need to enforce it. A police officer sees somebody riding without a light, dark clothes on, no reflective pedals, it's just ridiculous, we're just asking. For problems, but the e-bikes are making that even worse because most of them do have bikes, but some of the cheaper models. You can buy through the. Discount stores, if you will, I won't mention any names, uh, they're not, they're not properly equipped, so. We're moving forward, I think that's a good thing, but e-bikes are gonna become more and more prevalent on our streets, on our roads. They don't belong on the sidewalks as far as I'm concerned, especially. Four foot sidewalks, five foot sidewalks, that's. We always learned you don't ride your bike on the sidewalk. So.
Great.
Get off my soapbox, but we need to, we need to, I think we really need to look at that idea of how traffic flows on the on the bike path.
Thank you, Ken, thanks for the printouts too, appreciate it. Uh, somebody on the line? Hold on, we have Patricia? Well, we'll get, what's your next, hold on.
Alex.
No, who is it?
Alex Judge.
Alex Judge.
My up, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Not yet.
And. First, thank you to the Bike and Ped Committee, I appreciate that presentation. Second, Ken, great to hear from you, it's been a long time. Uh, third, just a slight comment on this issue, I know I'm I'm up next for um. Uh, some more fun, but I just, I just wanted to point out to everyone that often the. E bikes are twenty, thirty pounds heavier than a a normal bike. That's really it, I think the battery adds quite a bit of weight, so fifteen miles an hour. With twenty, thirty pounds extras, quite a bit of momentum going, so. Uh, that's the only comment, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Alex. Mr. Mittag?
Michael Mittag. Great presentation you guys did, uh, covered a lot of the points, but I'd like to pick up on. Something that the previous speaker mentioned, which is sidewalks. Sidewalks were originally and currently designed for people to walk on them, not for. Electric powered or otherwise wheeled um vehicles. To use, it's it's not, it's not a shared use path, or at least I don't, I've never seen it defined as a as a shared use path. It's a sidewalk. E bikes and bicycles and e scooters, when they get to a place where there's no shared use path, should get on the road. Like everybody else, I've done a lot of cycling in my life, not lately, uh, I did a lot of road racing. I had a very potent motorcycle in my. Youth. I've done a ton, which is a hundred miles an hour on a motorcycle. This was a four speed bike that did sixty-two in second, but um. We were never, never concerned, even when I cycled to school every day. Nobody was on a sidewalk, I would slipstream a bus if I needed to be in a hurry. I could probably do it here too, but sidewalks are for pedestrians and moms with strokes. They're not for e-bikes. I really think you should give this really, really careful consideration. Because I'm. I'm concerned that sidewalks are the place where there's gonna be an accident. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Come on down. Just make sure you, the bright green light is on on the base and you're close to the microphone and identify yourself.
Like that. My name's Greg Dolbeck. Yeah, I just wanted to point out, um, based on the last two gentlemen's suggestions that. I have young kids, I live in South Burlington, we live off of Route seven, so. Consideration for people who also need to use the sidewalks to get places when your kids are biking. We usually walk or ride our bikes to school and there's no real other way to get to school other than. With my seven year old and my nine year old on Route seven or on a sidewalk, so. You know, just considerations like that, there's a bunch of users, um. And then. On the topic of flow of a trail, I have um a lot of experience. With running professional events, cycling events. So knowing the flow is. I think a strength of mine. And if I can do just my my best Quebec French thing here right now, with my hands. So if you have a walker on the left side and. A cyclist coming toward them on the right side, what's the walker and cyclist gonna do? Is the walker gonna go here and then merge into a cyclist going this way without knowing what's behind them? It's just, you know, it's a good consideration, but just before any, you know, major decisions are made that. All, you know, things are considered with flow of the recreation paths and multi-use paths. Those are my two comments and thank you for your time.
Thank you, I I understand um the concern about the sidewalks, I mean, if if I bike down. Through from my house inside Mill, down through the Farrell Bike Path all the way down to Laurel Hill. When I come out at um the Bagel Bakery and if I want to get across Shelburne Road, I have to go down to Tutilio's, right, so I. You cannot ride on Shelburne Road, you on a bike, you can't. So you have to use a sidewalk, but you just, you're very cautious about it because. It's it's also, you know, not the smoothest surface, so you're gonna take your time and if somebody comes along, you slow down and get out of their way. That's and, you know, that's that's the way I I do it, um, but once I get to Tutilio's and I get the crosswalk, now I've got a. A real shared use path, once I get up to the, you know, the old Pine Street entrance, right from there. And then when it connects to Champlain Parkway, it's a beautiful shared use path all the way down to Lakeside, right? So, I just want to point out that CBS News had a segment on October sixteenth. About the mayor in Montville, New Jersey, and they had some awful video of a youth on a. On a fast e-bike hitting a car and going head over heels and landing on the car, the the body video is awful, but they're they're worried about. You know, these very fast class threes and accidents happening and whether helmets are being worn, so. It's it's a good little segment, it's short, so I urge you to take a look at it. Anybody else in the audience want to talk tonight? Okay, nobody online? So I guess you've gotten feedback from the council, is it adequate for what you need?
Nope.
Nope. Nope, not yet, I'm just why, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, so should we, just by working with the city staff to implement the education and signage? Recommendations first? Because we think that's most important, getting that word, the word out.
So can I amend that? So I would say put together a signage and education plan and budget for consideration.
Oh, sorry.
Sure.
Question to you, Jesse.
Too much signage.
If we say yes to this. Does that mean we're bumping something else, or is this something that staff can incorporate? In support of the Bike Ped Committee with current workload?
So that's um not particularly how I operate to give an on the fly decision like that, yes, I think things will either be bumped or slowed down. If you are looking for a specific recommendation on what that is, I would need to talk to the team who would be involved in this. And get their recommendations on what they're gonna stop doing, so I'm happy to come back with that, I think that may be another, in my, what I saw. Have as yeses here, that what's, what are we holding on is part of that yes column that I think I heard from you all.
So does it make sense for us to request that Jesse have a conversation with staff and get back to us with what? Staff can take on effectively to move this forward.
This is not a crisis emergency, right, this is. No, it's because we've had zero accidents so far, right? But we've had a lot of.
February, I haven't.
Right, we've had a lot of concerns expressed by the community about this, but. It's not like something bam has to happen tomorrow, right, but but there has to be communication with the school district as well, right? And how about safe routes to school or whatever that, because that committee's.
Can I just amend, so I agree, obviously. Jess, Jess will need to come back with us, see what the staff capacity is, but I think in parallel, if the Bike Ped Committee. Wants to spend their resources to come up with what they think is a good sign and what would be good educational materials. You you guys should go ahead and do that.
The only thing we might want to make sure we didn't. Educate incorrectly is confirming. That these non, we think non-e-bikes are illegally, illegal and we can.
Right, so I mean, I guess that's the next, next piece.
So we just need that, that that piece and. Yeah, sorry.
Right, so we, I mean, do do we struggle on. Asking similar requests for staff and Colin to um think about implementing the. Suggestions about redefining what can and cannot be on a shared use path, I think that makes sense to me to to do that work.
Well, I will go along with the majority, if I'm reading the room correctly. My personal view would be to ask staff to. Go ahead. It's, it may not be a crisis, but it is something. That we have heard about practically every meeting or gotten an email about since I've started serving. So I'm, and people have said they've been bringing the Bike Ped Committee has been working on this since twenty-four. Did you say?
Yeah, wait, that's when we really started hearing.
So. So, but I will go along with the majority, I'm reading the room, to have Jesse come back with. What might have to be slowed down.
I agree with you, Ann, but I want to be sensitive to the manager and staff and what our capacity is.
So here's my recommendation, Bob, tell me what I forgot. Uh, so I think you, either majority or four or five decision are, or four one decision. Are giving your blessing to staff working with the committee. To put together a signage educate, an education plan and budget for consideration. Uh, to look at the ordinance, if there's any modernizations, what about advisories and what about? Non-e-bikes being illegal, to partner with the school and to bring forward a recommendation on what we're slowing down and holding. And I think we could put to, we could, some of the staff could work with the Bike Ped Committee to put together a high level. Constantly project plan for this group of work and bring that back to you. In the middle of your budget consideration. Probably not in November, but early December.
Yeah, I'm I'm supportive of moving forward and with that direction, Jesse, I think the the qualification I have is. We're not, the council's not being given a choice right now of moving forward on this and what might be slowed down. So at some point, if there is. If it's coming to, this may have, they have to be slowed down or something that might be a higher priority, it would be helpful to understand. When you and your team come to that conclusion.
Well, that's why I'm recommending we bring it forward to you as a project plan, not a, here's a communications plan. But a, here's how we would go about developing, doing this work, and we think this is gonna take. X amount of time and we think it's gonna have an impact on these things um as a first step.
That makes perfect sense.
Sounds great to me, I have one question for you, Jesse.
Fantastic.
How do we? Are they already, and if not, how do we bring? Chief Burrow and the Police Department into awareness around these. Potentially illegal vehicles that are on our road being driven by teenagers, so that. Something is done to help bring it to to the awareness of parents and children that this is illegal behavior.
Yeah, um, so, you know, Chief Bro's part of our project team, so he will be brought in, Tim already emailed him uh today about. Uh, incident, I would just put out there for the community, though. The Police Department always will investigate illegal actions, like you don't need counsel direction to do that. So if members of the community are experiencing things that they believe are against state statute. Err on the side of being in contact with the police, you can do that through nine one one if it's an emergency incident, you can do that through the non-emergency line, you can. Send an email, but certainly an in the moment notification is always preferable to. A report out of council or from porch forum post, um, that's how we actually build the committee trust, intervene and have the conversations. On the ground as things are happening, so, yes, Chief Bro will be part of this project team, but that shouldn't. Negate anybody from always contacting the police if there's illegal activity underway of any kind.
So when I get feedback from a resident about this, my advice to them should be, contact the police when you see it.
If it's an illegal.
If it's an illegal, yeah, it's exactly.
That we don't know, that's the question, so if we can educate the public.
I think we do know, if it's more than a thousand watts, it needs to be licensed, registered and.
Well, he he, that's what he thinks he he interpreted from.
Okay.
So that's why, we just want a little clarification and the question is, is it this Police Department that would clarify that or the city attorney?
Let me do a some project planning work.
Yeah.
And maybe there are pieces of this that are quick one offs and maybe there are pieces of this that are diving into legal case law, I don't know.
We're not alone in this, and other communities do, so. So now, you're good?
I'm good.
And I just want to make one.
I'm good, I don't know, Timor, you're you're fine.
I'm good, thanks so much.
Uh, one last comment from the Katna Conference, there was a breakout session about lithium ion battery charging fires. Right, and to everybody who's thinking about buying a a microtransport device, right? If you can ensure that the battery and the motor or the mechanism on the on the micro ability uh device is. UL Underwriter Laboratories twenty-three eighty-nine certified. I know that sometimes the label's there and it's not real, but you can also go to the UL website and check to see if that model. I know that sometimes the label's there and it's not real, but you can also go to the UL website and check to see if that model. Is twenty-three eighty-nine certified or not, because if they both are and you charge it correctly and the battery hasn't been damaged by misuse. Or being, you know, thrown against a stone wall or something, then odds are it's not gonna burst into flames. Which leads into another discussion we had in a previous thing about fire prevention and whether garages, you know, need to have a one hour burn. You know what I mean? So there's, there's a lot of dimensions going on here. There's the sidewalk safety, there's home fire safety. So UL twenty-three eighty-nine, that's, I just wanted to impress on everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right.
All set.
Going on to item ten. Everybody's good? Do you need a break? No? No break? Keep going, all right. Item ten, receive report and budget request from the South Burlington City Center Collaborative. Again with Alex Judge and who's the president of the SB three C and Sophia Babbitt, who's our executive director of SB three C. SB three C, right, Anne? Good, you think Sophia?
Are there any other, do you have any other colleagues online that you'd like to move over to panelists or are they listening? Alex, maybe?
Yeah, you can move Alex. Thank you. And Stephanie Cudney?
That is not seeming to work. Oh, here she comes. Others?
It's completely frozen. Alex, you might want to share if you have it up. I can.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Better bring that up on my end. Let's see. I am disabled from sharing.
I gotta, I gotta kick Sophia out to make that happen.
There you go.
Oh, did that work?
Oh.
I got it.
Okay, great. It says. Says I am sharing as well. I'm gonna hit stop.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Sophia Babbitt. I'm the new executive director for South Burlington City Center Collaborative, SB three C. Uh, I'm thrilled to be here tonight alongside my board members behind me as well as on Zoom, so thank you all for being here. And I'm really excited to share the work of what SB three C has accomplished in the last few months. Uh, since I've come on board a little over a month ago. Uh, to share and present our FY twenty-seven budget and revenue proposal in alignment with our MOU with the city. Uh, for those who aren't familiar with SB three C, we are a volunteer driven five oh one C three nonprofit. With the purpose to help build the heart of South Burlington City. Uh, into a walkable as well as bikeable, uh, safe downtown hub where community commerce, connection and culture. All come together. Our collaborative's mission is to co-create the development of a vibrant city center downtown. In partnership with you, the city of South Burlington and its residents, businesses, property owners and community partners. The goals that you've seen and were established and presented in December of sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. Were the top five, um, plus a few additional FY twenty-six goals. That have now been activated since our MOU was agreed upon on August nineteenth of this year. And most recently, a little over a month ago, since I've been brought on board. I've outlined our accomplishments uh, since July. It mainly reflects over the last month of work. Uh, and to briefly provide a few top side highlights from the overview of what's been accomplished. Um, we've hired myself as the executive director. Um, we've established a office space at a hundred Dorset Street. We've added a few new board members alongside me. Well heard as well as um, two others. We've developed and implemented. Our website as well as our social media presence where we have a robust increase in engagement over the last months. We've executed our sponsored events in partnerships with the Park and Rec. Um, one of them being this upcoming Glow Walk and Ugly Sweater five K later in December. Where we've also established and continue to activate volunteers for both of these events. We're thrilled and excited to report that we've met our membership fee goal. With the support of community residents, existing local businesses and including new businesses who plan to relocate to Market Street. And at the city center retail space. We are on target and almost halfway to our accomplished FY twenty-six goal of increasing membership by five hundred percent. As uh, an organization, SB three C has adopted the Main Street approach. And for those who are not familiar, it's a multi-pronged strategy that other towns and cities. Um, around the US has embraced that transforms the community in economic vitality, promotion design as well as organization. Our major accomplishments um, consist of onboarding our newest intern from New VM. Um, she's helping us in researching and updating the current local South Burlington business database. We're also collaborating with Hello Burlington to host a workshop um, in the next couple of quarters. That's going to support local South Burlington businesses and, you know, help increase their visibility. Not only to local residents, but also to the surrounding towns and cities and most importantly, the tourists. Who are visiting our beautiful state. We've joined the Main Street America Organization as an affiliated member. And hope to be recognized as a designated Vermont Downtown designation in FY twenty-seven. Vermont State, they are currently rolling out their programming for next year, um, part of the new town city. The new town center designation program, um, and we're planning to apply for that. We have launched a few social campaigns to increase our followers and engagement across um, our social channels. Um, one of them being the Fall Giveaway, where we partnered with three local South Burlington businesses. Um, that drawing will close on Wednesday, uh, and we'll announce the winner on Friday. So I encourage you to follow us on Instagram at SB three C Vermont. Uh, tag two friends and a local South Burlington business and you'll be entered in that drawing. So we're currently on track to fully utilize our FY twenty-six budget. And we've outlined our FY twenty-seven goals, tasks, roles and responsibilities in partnership with the city. That would support us not only in sustaining our operational capacity, continuing to grow our funding funnels. Expanding our community engagement and communication and executing organizing community events alongside with the promotion. Um, as well as advancing our Main Street America work plan and approach. So this brings uh, me to our proposed funding request of seventy-five thousand for FY twenty-seven. And I understand that this is in fact, um, not the same allocation as of last year. So there was a carryover of unused funds of twenty thousand um, from FY twenty-five into FY twenty-six. So our revised funding request is an additional twenty thousand incremental that was allocated from last year. Um, FY twenty-six of fifty-five thousand. So we are hoping you will consider our proposed request um, to ensure the continuity. Of our orga, or of our operations and our programmatic growth.
I like it. It's cool. It's like NASA. Be in the medical center in the operating room.
So um, there's been many more hours that have been executed in my current role to get us where we are today. There's a lot more communication that needs to occur for people to have a better understanding of life in the city center. And I want to ensure that we are successful at communicating those messages. Uh, and allowing SB three programs to grow and advance South Burlington City Center. Vision through engagement through our events as well as our economic vitality. So I would love to invite you uh, to attend one of our board meetings if you haven't attended yet. Um, and we thank you for your support from the previous fiscals as well as um, your, hopefully your support um, going forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Questions from council?
Maybe this is a question for a lot. I'm just curious how other cities um, support. Obviously, this is a really important initiative. Um, but I'm curious how other cities support this. And is it the case that most of the funding of organizations like this do come from municipality? Is it the case that that starts out that way and then it transitions? Does it not transition? Like what, what are examples that we see?
So as I've kicked off in the last little bit over a month, um, I've met with the executive director from Winewski. I'm planning to meet with the downtown organizations of Burlington, so I'm in that process of. Understanding exactly where their funding and their budgeting comes from. Um, from what I understand, it's been a mix of, of both of um, of city and town funding as well as. Activating through sponsorships and grants. I think one big funnel of funding that, that. Other fellow towns and cities receive and that I had quickly mentioned before about um, being. Recognized as a Vermont Downtown designation is that South Burlington City, we, we currently were not considered historic yet. We're pretty, we're pretty new. Um, so this new uh, sponsorships and grants that the Vermont State will be rolling out next year. Um, we will be eligible to apply when that funding comes. But from what I've understood, just in the kickoff of other towns and cities that are, that are established right now. Um, it's been a diverse mix of funding between their current city or town, but also through the Vermont designation program.
So if I could add to that too, um, and Alana has, so every community I've worked for has a downtown association. Alana's got experience as well, out of state as well. Um, I think Sophia is absolutely right. It's a mix across downtown organizations. Um, in Vermont, you have a combination of um, always a mixed revenue stream, so never solely dependent on a municipality. But munis, and, but municipalities, yes, always contributing to a downtown association. But that could be in the form of general fund dollars, that could be in the form of um, shared parking revenue, that could be in the form of shared local options tax. Or that could be in the form of um, a dedicated downtown improvement district tax, which is what Montpelier has. Um, where they're actually, the downtown businesses are taxed at a different rate to fund their downtown association. Um, I think that's very di, I don't think we, I am not recommending that yet because we're still a growing downtown, not a long established downtown. Um, but there, so there are lots of ways this could look. I think that um, my initial thoughts on this is that. What it looks like in FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine may be very different than what it looks like. As there, it's a well-established, higher functioning, no, I don't, I mean that with all due respect, longer functioning organization. Um, Alana, do you wanna add anything?
Um, I have a question about, we, uh, council fairly recently adopted the um, economic development strategic plan. How do, how does an organization that's like SB three C, a more of a volunteer driven organization? Nonprofit interface with the economic development strategic plan that's a five year plan? Has there been overlap in those conversations at all?
I, I have not met yet with the Economic Development uh, Committee yet, but plan to, and I do think that there is. A lot of overlap that, that will happen and hopefully will happen. Um, I think as a, as a city, the whole, you know, everything that comes together to build. The success of a, of a sitters, of a city center and the downtown, the economic vitality comes into play. Um, and that, with that results in supporting our existing local businesses as well as um. As the ones that are going to be uh, residing in the Market Street um, retail space. So um, yes, there is opportunity and yes, we do plan to meet with the committee.
Any other comments from council? So the request is to level fund the next year, right?
So technically, no. You did allocate seventy-five thousand to SB three C this year, but when you did that in August, it was a combination of. FY twenty-five money that we rolled over from FY twenty-five that wasn't spent and FY twenty-six money. So right now you have tax capacity for fifty-five thousand, so this would be a twenty thousand dollar add of tax capacity.
And that could come from, like you said, it could be ARBA inspired too if we wanted.
You, you could use one-time money as well, yep.
Well, should we have that discussion? Or are we talking budget holistically?
Um, I don't think you need to have that conversation now. I think what I'm, I'm look, or I don't know, Sophia, you have a different opinion on timing. But from my perspective, um, what I would like to see is head nods that you would like me to give it to you as an option in the FY twenty-seven budget. Uh, and then you can weigh it against all your other options.
Nodding.
Thank you.
Five bobbleheads nodding, yes, we agree.
Do you have different timing needs?
I don't think so. Alex, I think we are, we are good with that, just having it reflect in the proposal and the budget request.
Anne is our liaison. She'll keep us up to date about all the meetings.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it and I appreciate your time.
Do we have to run that race at all?
Just say thank you for doing this work. It's gonna be critical to the vitality of this new city center and, and what we're trying to accomplish, so. Thank you.
I'll say, uh, stay tuned also. Hopefully we have a non, a non-race event uh, coming up, although a question. Um, Tim, is your son, is your son Sam?
Is what?
Did you have?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you're talking to me. Uh, yes, that is my son Sam.
Okay, he was a pretty good runner, if I recall from uh, my days coaching at South Burlington, so I'm sure you have a.
Your class of twenty thirteen as well?
No, no, I was coaching. I was two thousand nine, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, thank you, yeah. Anything else?
I thank you all for your time. Sorry for the, the aggression.
That's okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. We'll see you later. Uh, moving on to item eleven, which is convene as Liquor Control Commission to consider the following applications for approval. Gonzo, Stewart, Shops, Jolly, five four six, five oh seven, five oh five, and five oh four, is that? I think so, yeah. Kind of a motion to enter into liquor control.
Motion to enter into liquor control.
Second?
Uh, we have a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, kind of a motion to approve the liquor control licenses for the five license I just mentioned.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, and a discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. I need the motion to come out of liquor control.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous as well. We're now at item E twelve, which is review the significant agenda topics below for council's November third. Meeting.
Right, so this is what has been on your agenda planner, so we have um, warned. A second reading and public hearing for the fire prevention and protection ordinance and the electrical and spec, um, installation ordinance. Uh, receive a briefing on the efforts to promote community safety and city center. Um, receive a presentation on the city's parking study and start providing initial direction on that. And then um, receive a recommendation on the expansion of five seventy-five Dorset Street.
So can we possibly put on the agenda, um, the briefing on that circulation study? Um, it was the circulation study around Rick Marcot. It was kind of a really hot topic a year or two ago, and I think parents. Will want to see that and they want to comment on it.
Can you say it again?
The circulation study around Rick Marcot, remember? Um, hired. Yeah, we hired.
Oh, oh, about the intersection, okay.
I think we hired VHB to do that study for us.
So the market, the Tilio intersection.
Yeah, yeah, because we, we have the report now, right? So it'd be good to, I think, discuss that here. And I'd love to see.
So yes, pending availability of somebody to actually present to you.
I'd love to um have a discussion about the Community Justice Center. Just make sure I understand it, but also answer the questions that a number of members of the public had. Um, that they wrote us emails on.
Um, okay. Can I just talk to you about it or do you need a memo?
You can talk to us.
Okay.
Yeah, you can talk to us.
Sure.
Okay, great. Okay.
Um, can.
Yes.
I couldn't, uh, I know I've asked this question before, but do we have a timeline on the master plan for parks and open space?
My understanding is that they just made, I know they just made the presentation to uh Planning Commission. They're. I'm not clear on this, but they're gonna be presenting to us in November. Prior to doing their last public presentation.
Yeah, so my.
And they're running out of time.
My understanding, um, and Paul's doing some work on this, so um. I may, I may not have all the information since he and I talked about on Thursday, is that there are a number of committees who still want to receive the presentation. And traditionally, what we've done is have committees have their kind of bite at the apple and then bring you a draft incorporating that change. At, but bring it to you as a draft, so then you can still put your own fingerprints on it. But if you start putting your fingerprints on it before committees have kind of finished their work, it gets a little squishy. Um, so I'm, I don't see how we meet a November deadline of that.
To, to meet all the committee, yeah.
So I think it's much more likely that would be in December or early January.
And, and then the other topic that's sort of floated around for a long time has been the um healthcare.
Yes, yes, that.
November third.
November third. Also on your November third, it's not on this list.
Sorry, is that, was that on here?
No, it is not on this list, but Steve is telling me, yes.
You can add it. Yeah, that, that uh master plan needs some more tuning. There were some errors on some slides that need to be fixed and do, yeah, sorry.
That's gonna be a doozy of a meeting, we'll see.
Can we blow this up and put it from there?
So one of the.
That's very yellow thing you just said just now.
Um, we could. Um, I think one of the things that the speaker talked about was with other leagues. They've done a, a jointly branded rack card like that where you have the dignity index on one side. And then Vermont League of Cities and Towns Service offerings on one side. So you have kind of the rooted civility into local service. Um, so my hope is that the league will be producing them for communities. Um, but we could, we could make a bigger, if, I mean, I guess we would need permission.
I had a conversation with, um, I'm sorry, I can't remember his name from the league who invited us to.
Ted.
Ted. Had a conversation with Ted about this and we talked about. The league working with. All the communities in Vermont to get it in. Town clerks offices, libraries, in the school system, et cetera, and doing the, the co-branding. Um, to make it a Vermont thing and I. I said I would do anything I could to help promote that, but I think it's, to have this visible in every public space, I think would be. A fabulous thing in our current political atmosphere. He was pretty excited about it, so.
But, but to be honest, we have a pretty civil discourse that occurs in this room.
We do.
Absolutely.
This, this kind of, I guess, amplifies it and celebrates it and reinforces, right, which is important.
But we're gonna start yelling colors, I just know it.
That was very.
That was red.
So are we into other businesses?
We are. I am thirteen other businesses, Ernie.
Uh, one question, we got a note from Jesse on the CCRPC meeting next week.
And the tw-. Thirtyth.
Yes.
At Winewski.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, it was a suggestion to have two members.
I'm going.
I'm going.
Oh, okay.
Then that's it, because we don't want to have a quorum.
If we don't talk about city business, well, you say by nature.
Regional business, regional business.
You say by nature of it. Well, can we talk about things we have done?
So I'd, I, this is a good question. I, and I'm happy to do follow up if you want. When, when they did the first one, it was um. It was advertised as education for elected officials, which doesn't matter. Um, this one CCR, which was led by the league, this one, which is being led by CCRPC, says in the invitation coordinate, so there's not a quorum. Um, so I'm happy to follow up with CCRPC and see if that holds true. Um, I am concerned that with the language that they've put out now, it's, oh, I mean.
If you want to go.
So we have two people who are going. Uh, I wrote it down that I am able to go, but I, I, I just wanted to make sure we had representation and we kind of get a report back.
So I went to the first one and Lori went to the first one. Did you, you didn't go?
If there's no concern about quorum, I would consider going as well. But if there's a concern, I'm happy to have.
Yeah.
Tim and Andrew.
Yeah. I would concur with that.
A flip for it.
No, I think you guys should go here, yeah. One of the things they said was they thought it would be good for the chair to be there.
Oh, the chair, okay.
Yeah, so, so you're in automatically.
Auto, automatic, yeah, because their pizza is really good, that's what I know. It's not just about the pizza, you know, the fact that it's pepperoni and cheese.
This is a different presentation, so it may be different pizza.
No, no, it well, could be, but it's also Winewski, so I don't.
It's this Friday.
No.
No, it's the thirty.
It's the thirtieth.
Of the thirty, because I was gonna say I could.
And it's also a costume party too, so.
So I will ask the education versus quorum question and let you know.
Yeah, did, what did you say, repeat that?
I will ask the education versus quorum question and let you know if there's an opportunity.
Was that the only other business?
That's what I had.
Okay. Uh, can I have a, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is eight forty nine.
Don't leave, don't leave without signing.